Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. Florida and Antillan Manatee Proposed Listing Public Meeting and Hearing. We're going to give folks a few minutes here to join the meeting and then we'll begin the PowerPoint presentation shortly. So please stay tuned. I do want to note that closed captioning is available by clicking the Live Transcript on your Zoom toolbar and then selecting Show Subtitles. Thank you, everyone, for your patience as we give folks a few minutes here to join. Again, welcome, everyone, to this evening's meeting. We're going to give folks another minute here to join, so please stay tuned and we'll start the presentation shortly. Again, I do want to note that closed captioning is available by clicking the Live Transcript button on your Zoom toolbar and then selecting Show Subtitles. All right, we'll go ahead and get started and move to the next slide. We're pleased to offer Spanish translation for the presentation and Q and A session today. Before we get started, I'll explain how to select your language if you prefer to listen in Spanish rather than English. This meeting will include live Spanish translation and attendees are welcome to ask questions in Spanish or provide comments in Spanish. To access Spanish language interpretation, please click on the globe icon and select Spanish. Those continuing in English do not need to do anything. To hear the interpreted language only, you'll click Mute Original Audio. We do appreciate your patience while our interpreters work to make it sure everyone is able to hear and understand the meeting proceedings. There may be short periods of silence in the meeting while interpretation is taking place. And with that, we'll turn it over to our interpreter Cynthia to translate these instructions for everyone on the call.
Thank you, Megan. Saludos a todos y todas. Nos placer ofrecer el servicio de traducción en español tanto para la presentación principal como para la sesión de preguntas y respuestas durante esta noche. Antes de comenzar, voy a explicar cómo seleccionar el idioma si es que en el caso de que usted prefiera escucharlo en español en vez de en inglés. Para esta reunión se estará incluyendo el servicio de traducción simultánea en español y se le da la bienvenida a todos los participantes que deseen hacer sus preguntas en español. Para tener acceso a la interpretación del idioma español, por favor, haga clic en el icono del globo y ahí puede seleccionar español. Aquellos que deseen continuar escuchando el seminario en inglés no necesitan seguir estas instrucciones. También, si lo desean escuchar solamente la interpretación en español, pueden seleccionar hacer clic en el audio original, silenciar el audio original. Agradecemos su paciencia mientras las intérpretes trabajan para asegurarse de que todo el mundo pueda escuchar lo que se discuta en esta presentación, en esta reunión, y lo puede entender también. Puede que hay algunos periodos breves de silencio durante la reunión mientras la interpretación está ocurriendo.
All right, for the remainder of the meeting, if you'd like to hear Spanish again, please click that globe icon and select Spanish. And with that, we'll just take a moment to make sure our interpreters are all set up.
Megan, this is Cynthia. I will need to be sort of as interpreter again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we should be good to go now. Next slide, please. All right, now that we've gone over access to the language interpretation, we'll go ahead and get started. On behalf of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, I would like to thank you all for joining us. We appreciate your time and participation. My name is Megan Stone with AECOM, a contractor for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and I'm going to be one of your meeting facilitators tonight. Additionally, I have several members of the service with me on the meeting who will be introduced in a moment. On the screen is our expected agenda for the evening. I'll first go over a brief orientation to Zoom and some ground rules for this evening's meeting. The service will welcome you all and provide introductions. Then the service will provide a presentation on the proposed listing, which will last approximately thirty minutes. We'll follow that with a question and answer session to answer any questions you might have about the presentation and proposed listing during a forty-five-minute Q and A session. For the remainder of the meeting, we will accept verbal public comments for approximately forty-five, fifty minutes, sorry, and then we'll provide closing remarks. Next slide, please. All right, so for some brief ground rules, first, this meeting is being recorded as part of the project record and will be posted later on. Second, your microphones and videos will be turned off for the duration of the meeting tonight. You will only be unmuted if and when I unmute you during the question and answer session. If you are a phone caller, as phone callers don't have access to the Zoom chat, or during the verbal public comment session if you are commenting. Third, questions will be addressed during the Q and A session after the presentation. We'll begin with questions submitted through registration, so there is no need to resubmit those questions. We will then move on to live questions coming in through the Zoom chat. We'll do our best to address the questions in the order they come in to allow everyone an opportunity to voice their questions this evening. We'll then move on to the public comment portion, during which we will accept verbal public comments from participants who have joined. If you registered before the start time of tonight's meeting and indicated that you wanted to offer a verbal public comment tonight, you are on our list of pre-registered commenters. We will call on pre-registered commenters in the order of registration. If you registered after the meeting started, we'll do our best to reserve some time for you to have an opportunity to offer your verbal public comment. If you do not get the opportunity to offer your verbal public comment tonight, written public comments can be submitted at regulations.gov and we'll provide further information on how to submit your written public comments at the end of the presentation. The service will review all public comments, written and verbal. Lastly, we want to note that the slides being presented this evening are available on the Fish and Wildlife Service's website and we'll put that link in the chat. And like I said earlier, this meeting is being recorded and transcribed. Please do know it will take time to post the recording as the service ensures all documents posted are accessible and compatible with screen readers. With that, I'll now turn it over to John Vasili with the service to welcome you all.
Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. And I don't see my camera on. I'm not sure if someone needs to. I've got it on, but I'm not seeing me there, but it's on. Great. Good evening, everyone. My name's John Vasili. I am the Deputy State Supervisor for the Florida Ecological Services Office, and I'm based in Jacksonville, Florida this evening, and it's my privilege tonight to introduce our manatee listing team and from the Caribbean Ecological Services Field Office, we have a suite of folks. They're all based in Puerto Rico this evening, and we have JP Zegarra, who is the Recovery Lead for the Antillan Manatee, and you'll hear from JP as he he reviews the status of that subspecies. We have Lourdes Mena, the Field Supervisor for that Caribbean Field Office, and Jose Cruz Burgos, who's the TNE Species Program Coordinator for that for that region or field office as well. For the Florida Ecological Services Field Office, we have Terry Callison, who's the Recovery Lead for the Florida Manatee, and you'll be hearing from Terry in our presentation on the Florida Manatee status. And with Terry, we have Billy Brooks, who's a seasoned senior biologist with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and Scott Callison as well. All are on the call this evening, and we have Nikki Colangelo with us as well, who is the supervisor for our Division of Classification and Recovery here in Florida. And from our Southeast Regional Office, we have Chandler Eaglestone, who is a biologist, and Kristy Young, who is our Acting Manager for the Division of Conservation and Classification, and she's going to help us with any policy questions that that come up this evening. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to JP down in Puerto Rico.
Thank you, GN. You can go to the next slide. Am I coming in clear?
Yes, you are.
Perfect. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the presentation for tonight. My name is John Segarra, or JP, and I will be presenting a very brief summary of the species background, the proposed listing action, the current condition, and the summary for the Antillan Manatee information. The West Indian Manatee species is comprised of two subspecies, the Forda Manatee and the Antillan Manatee, and since 2017, the West Indian Manatee has been listed as a threatened species throughout its entire range, and you can see a picture of the two subspecies on the screen. Next slide. Just a little bit about the species biology. Manatees are considered a wide-ranging marine mammal, and they use a variety of freshwater estuarine and marine habitats for their survival and life history needs. For example, for feeding, drinking fresh water, traveling, resting, thermoregulation, mating, and raising those calves as well. Manatees mostly feed on seagrass and other submerged, floating, and emergent vegetation. Some of the differences between the subspecies include their range, their general size and weight, skeletal measurements, genetics, and some threats and conservation needs as well. Their distribution and ecological needs also vary by region. For example, for the manatees inhabit northern limits of the species range and therefore require stable, long-term sources of warm water. Next slide. In this map, you can clearly see the general northern and southern range for both subspecies in orange for the Antillan Manatee distribution and in darker blue for the Forda Manatee distribution. There are some areas of potential overlap between the two subspecies, but these are not shown on this map. And the purpose of this map was just to show the general distribution of the subspecies range. Next slide. Going on to the Proposed Listing Action Summary, the service recognizes the Antillan and the Florida Manatee subspecies as separate listable entities under the Endangered Species Act. Therefore, the service is proposing to this the two subspecies of the West Indian Manatee separately. We're proposing to list the Antillan Manatee as endangered and the Forda Manatee as threatened with a blanket four D regulation. Blanket four D regulations provide additional protections to a threatened species that are automatically given to endangered species and allows the service to apply all of the Section Nine provisions of the Endangered Species Endangered Species Act to a threatened species. This regulation is consistent with the current management strategies since the West Indian Manatee is currently protected by the same blanket four D rule. Next slide. Continuing with the Proposed Listing Actions, this Proposed Listing Action is informed by the Species Status Assessment Reports for both subspecies. And you, and both of those are available for public review. You can see a screenshot of the of the first page of those species status assessments on your screen. For information on previous federal actions for the manatee, please refer to the Proposed Listing Rule, and you can see the reference and date for that rule on the slide. Critical Habit That Is Being Revised is a separate rulemaking action, and you can see the reference and date for that one as well on the slide. Today's meeting will only concern the Proposed Listing Actions that will also serve as our twelve-month findings on two manatee petitions and also as our completed fire review for the West Indian Manatee. Now on to our Current Condition Summary. So to assess the current condition for both the Antillan and Forda subspecies, we delineated residency units based on data availability, connectivity, and ecological and dispersal patterns. And in simple terms, resiliency is the ability to sustain populations through their natural range of both favorable and unfavorable conditions. So maintaining sufficiently resident populations across a range of a species increases the ability of that species to adapt to the natural selection processes and would increase the chances that the species will persist in a changing world. So for the current condition assessment for both subspecies, all units received a resiliency score from low to high. Next slide. Now I will present a brief summary for the Antillan Manatee. Next slide. On this map, you can see the fourteen Antillan Manatee resiliency units we use for the current condition assessment. The pictured units are meant to portray the general extent of each unit and are not meant to reflect the areas of presence and absence within each unit. These fourteen units for the Antillan Manatee span nineteen countries within the Caribbean and Central and South America. Next slide. For each of the Antillan units, the main contributing factor to score resiliency was population trend. Thus, a declining population equals a low resiliency score. In summary, the abundance estimates for the Antillan Manatee populations are mostly considered highly uncertain, and the information indicates abundance is declining across most of the subspecies range. The relative abundance estimates for each of these units range from twenty manatees to no more than fourteen hundred individuals. And the reported declines are due to ongoing threats such as watercraft collisions, habitat loss and modification, poaching, lack of effective enforcement, and other threats. Next slide. This table shows the current condition results for the Antillan Manatee assessment sorted in descending order of estimated relative abundance, which you can see on the second column, and is based upon the assessment of population trend and the certainty of that information. You can see the names of the fourteen units in the first column, the trend category on the fourth column, and the current resiliency score on the last column shaded in gray. Note that the largest populations for the Antillan Manatee occur in Brazil and in the Caribbean, Mexico, Belize, and Guatemala habitats. The smallest populations occur in Lake Maracaibo in Venezuela, the island of Jamaica, and the Panama Canal. Next slide. What you're seeing on screen is an image representation for the results of the resiliency scores for the fourteen Antillan Manatee units. The Puerto Rico unit is the only unit with moderate resiliency. The rest of the thirteen units all scored a low resiliency due to a declining trend or unknown trend. Next slide. So to conclude our summary of the current condition for the Antillan Manatee, our review of the best available information indicates that the Antillan Manatee meets the ACT's definition of an endangered species that is in danger of extinction throughout all of its range. And based on the proposed endangered status for the Antillan Manatee, we did not undertake an analysis of a potential distinct population segment for the Puerto Rico population as proposed by one of the petitions we received. And now I pass it over to Terry Callison, and she will be presenting the summary information for the Forda Manatee. Thank you, everyone.
Right, next slide. All right. Thank you, JP. And again, I'm Terry Callison. I'm the Florida Manatee Recovery Lead, and I'm going to give you a little bit of a window into the world of the Florida Manatee and go through a lot of the summary information in a similar fashion to what JP just went through. So next slide. And just a refresher for specific characteristics that I think are going to be relevant to some of the additional information that we'll present. For the Florida Manatee subspecies, we are dealing with the wide-ranging marine mammal. The distribution varies significantly by season. They exhibit strong seasonal migratory behavior because warm water is so critical for their survival. They are found at the northern limits of the range, and that is why the warm water becomes so increasingly important. And we put a very big focus on foraging habitat as well, and depending on where these manatees are found, they may forage on seagrass, eelgrass, or other types of submerged, floating, and emergent vegetation. Next slide, please. So again, to assess the current condition for the Florida Manatee, we assessed resiliency within two resiliency units. The East Coast, generally the East Coast and the Gulf Coast, that reflects their warmer, warm season distribution, and you'll notice the Gulf Coast extending as far west as Texas and the East Coast extending all the way up to the northern limits around Delaware Bay. These resiliency units were also comprised of two management units. For the East Coast, that would be the Atlantic and the Upper St. John's River, and then the Gulf Coast, the Northwest and the Southwest units. These four management units that we utilized in our analysis are consistent with those that have been historically used in state and federal manatee management efforts, and those are based on extensive data collection through abundance or distribution or through telemetry, such tracking data such as an animal there in the bottom middle of the screen and also mortality data. Next slide, please. So let's see how the Florida Manatee measures up. A few of the more critical items that we looked at during our evaluation, we did consider the most recent population estimate for the Florida Manatee, which is between eight thousand three hundred and fifty and eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty individuals, and that is data obtained from FWC during 2021 to 2022 surveys. Our resiliency evaluation included four condition factors: population trend between 2011 and 2020, looking at regional foraging habitat condition, also looking at winter foraging habitat condition, and winter warm water refugia and the quality of those warm water sites. Resiliency ranged from moderate to high when evaluating the subspecies at each of the management unit and coastal resiliency unit levels. The Atlantic unit is considered low for the time period 21 to 2023 due to the Atlantic Coast unusual mortality event, and that's an event where we lost over thirteen hundred animals due to the catastrophic loss of seagrass, and we had animals suffering from malnutrition, and it was a starvation event. I would like to note that additional data evaluation and population modeling efforts are ongoing, and those are both retrospective and projecting forward. So we are awaiting modeling efforts from the integrated population model as well as the core biological model that many of you may be familiar with. Those will give us different looks at exactly what's going on with the Florida Manatee, and those efforts are ongoing. Next slide. Okay, so here is our Florida Manatee resiliency summary, and essentially, we're looking at, as JP mentioned, the adaptive capacity to changing environmental conditions. Again, we assessed at two seasonal scales, so you see sort of the colder distribution as well as the two units for the warm season distribution, and we evaluated foraging and available warm water habitat. With the management unit look, you'll see that that ranged from moderate to high, but during that twenty-one to twenty-three timeframe for the Atlantic unit, you'll see that that resulted in low resiliency during our evaluation. Overall, when looking at the East and the Gulf Coast, those were still moderate to high with the East Coast having a moderate resiliency, again, due to the diminished nature of forage in that particular area. So that was the consideration there. And population trends are stable or increasing in three of those four management units. Next slide, please. So to go over current and give you a view into future condition, the Florida Manatee does not meet the definition of endangered species because it is not currently at risk of extinction in all or a significant portion of its range. Based on an assessment of future conditions, the Florida Manatee meets the definition of a threatened species, that is, one that is likely to become endangered in the foreseeable future throughout all or a significant portion of its range. Next slide, please. And so in consideration of our threatened, proposed threatened listing for the Florida Manatee, we looked at numerous primary threats, and I'd like to draw your attention to some of those key primaries threats. Those were watercraft collisions, habitat loss, including seagrass loss and modification from coastal development, unusual mortality events, natural processes including cold weather events and harmful algal blooms, human interaction, and loss of warm water refugia. Looking forward, we have extensive concern for the loss of some of the industrial sites. As many of you know, about sixty percent of the Florida manatees are right now reliant on industrial warm water sites. Next slide, please. So just sort of the take homes from our evaluation. How does the proposed rule affect this subspecies? What would be the changes? The change would be that the listed entity changes to the subspecies level. And then what stays the same? The listing status would overall stay the same at threatened if this rule was finalized, but those protections would remain in place from both the Endangered Species Act and the Marine Mammal Protection Act, and our management efforts, which are significant, would continue. Next slide. So since I mentioned our management efforts, I wanted to highlight a number of our key Florida manatee conservation efforts. We have a significant amount of research activities going on. These are done by the state, federal agencies, non-governmental organizations, and other partners that are working on abundance and distribution, health surveillance, mortality investigations, population modeling, and other very important efforts. We have a very robust rescue and rehabilitation program. We have a cooperative of twenty-four organizations, major partners for the Fish and Wildlife Service that are organized to rescue, rehabilitate, and release manatees, and they are called the Manatee Rescue and Rehabilitation Partnership. They have rescued already over two thousand six hundred manatees and counting, and I believe a few were rescued today. Also, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in 2020 finalized the Warm Water Habitat Action Plan to prepare for the eventual loss of these industrial warm water sites. And we have begun our process to evaluate and move forward, chart a path forward, and that is through regional partnership teams. We have launched the Atlantic North and the Atlantic South teams. As I mentioned, we had more concern with the Atlantic unit. We opted to start there, and we will soon be launching the Southwest unit. Spring and habitat restoration efforts will continue, and those are good. You know, what's good for manatees is good for the entire ecosystem. So more You know, what's good for manatees is good for the entire ecosystem, so more good news there. Next slide. We have our Florida manatee recovery plan, the Florida manatee management plan by the state, and our annual stock assessment report. So there's still much management going on and much monitoring. Our manatee protection strategies will continue at state, federal, and local levels. We're extremely fortunate to have so many close partnerships in all aspects for the Florida manatee. There are manatee protection zones, county-wide manatee protection plans. 16 coastal counties have those. We will be proceeding with other things like protections for water control structures and project consultations through the Section 7 consultation process. And enforcement and educational initiatives are exceedingly important, and those will continue as well moving forward. Next slide. So next steps, now that we've gotten together here, what will be next? Well, we will be accepting comments received or postmarked on or before March 17th, 2025, and then the Fish and Wildlife Service will review those comments on the proposed listing actions. We want to hear from you and evaluate the new information and respond to substantial comments in the final rule. Next slide, please. So I'd like to thank you for your interest in the meeting tonight, and specifically for the information pertaining to the Florida manatee. And with that, I'm going to pass this over to Megan. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Teri, and thank you, Jan, for those presentations. We'll go ahead and get started with our question-answer session. Again, my name is Megan Stone, and I'll be the facilitator for the Q and A. We'll go ahead and get started with the Q and A, which will last about 45 minutes. The intent of this question-answer session is to answer any substantive questions you have for the service on the presentation and proposed listing. Before I go over instructions on how to submit questions, we wanted to thank folks for submitting questions when they registered for this evening's meeting. We did want to note that we'll start with those questions in a moment, so there's no need to resubmit those. All right, next slide, please. I'll first go over instructions for how to submit a question if you are joining us on the Zoom web platform or Zoom app. At this time, if you have a question and you're using the Zoom web platform or Zoom app, please go ahead and click on the chat icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you hover your mouse over the bottom of your Zoom screen, the icon should appear. You may need to exit your full-screen view on Zoom to see the chat icon. I've included a graphic on the screen of where you can find that icon that's on the left. You can then type your question in the chat box, and please send it to hosts and panelists. We'll then read the question aloud for all participants to hear, and a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service team member will respond to your question aloud. We'll do our best to answer those questions in the order that they come in and to respond to all of the substantive questions we received this evening. Again, please save any comments you have for the verbal public comment portion of today's meeting, which will be after the Q and A. And I don't see that we have any phone callers joining us, but we'll leave this instruction up on the screen and monitor to see if we have any phone callers so we can give them instructions on how to submit a question. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with our first preregistered question, which was, please discuss OE and how we can minimize its spread across monarch populations. So since that question is related to monarch butterflies, it's outside of the scope of this meeting, but we will follow up with that registrant with a link to the monarch butterfly page with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. With that, we'll move on to the next preregistered comment or question, excuse me. And this is for Scott. If the Florida seagrass critical habitats that support Florida manatees has been granted additional protections, why haven't Florida manatees? And again, we'll turn that over to Scott.
Thanks, Megan, and thanks, everybody, for attending the hearing tonight. Answer to that question, first off, the critical habitat is proposed at this point, but it's not yet final. So the proposal would expand the amount of critical habitat in Florida and add critical habitat in Puerto Rico, but it's only proposed at this point. As far as protections for seagrass, that already exists. And what we're proposing tonight with the listing rules, what we're talking about tonight, wouldn't change any of the protections for seagrass, but they would continue to be protected there. The listing status itself, manatees are already receiving the same protections as an endangered species. As we discussed earlier, they're currently listed at the species, the West Indian manatee species at that level with blanket 4D rule, and the changes being proposed would continue to have that level of protection for the Florida manatee, so there wouldn't be any change as far as that goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. We've got another question here for you. If listed as threatened or endangered, would the public be able to swim with them in the wild?
Good question. So swimming with manatees is not specifically prohibited now. What is prohibited is any action that harasses or injures manatees, and swimming could certainly do that in some circumstances, but it's not specifically prohibited. Oops, sorry, missed my notes there. Crystal River National Wildlife Refuge is where most of the organized swimming takes place now. It has its own specific regulations that apply to swimming with manatees and other activities that occur on the water, and none of what we're proposing tonight would change any of that. So essentially, no change.
Thank you, Scott. All right, we'll move on to our next question, which is for Teri. Can you please summarize potential impacts to the agricultural industry related to this proposed listing if it comes to fruition?
Hey there, thank you. If this moves forward, the proposed listing change would not change any protections or current activity, so there should be no impacts for agriculture? That's sort of the simple answer to that one. Thank you.
Thanks, Teri. We also got the following question. Will the state of Florida actually finally propose the required new rule and definitions so that our springs will be cleaner? So this question is outside of the scope of this meeting. This question would be best directed to the Florida Department of Education, or sorry, Environmental Protection and the Water Management Districts. So we'll go ahead and move on to our next preregistered question, which is for Chrissy. What scientific considerations are being made by the service that justify their decision to keep the manatee status as threatened?
Yeah, so Teri went through this a little bit in the presentation, but just to summarize, for Florida manatees, we did determine that they're affected by watercraft collisions, habitat loss, modifications from coastal development, the UME, of course, and other stressors, but that all of the winter management units and the coastal resiliency units exhibit either moderate or to high current condition, and that they support that, and that supports the viability of the subspecies. So we do acknowledge that the UME is impacting the Atlantic Winter Management Unit, but the magnitude and severity of that has not yet been determined, and the other three winter management units exhibit and are continuing to exhibit stronger positive growth compared to that Atlantic unit. So therefore, the species did not meet the definition of an endangered species.
Thank you, Chrissy. All right, we have another question for Teri. Since the Indian River Lagoon continues to provide inadequate food and habitat for the Florida manatee, how can we fix this?
That's a great question, and I think we certainly have some good news. We've seen a lot of improvements to forage quality and quantity that are occurring in that northern Indian River Lagoon area, and we've seen that really starting in late '22 and into '23 into the present. That's being monitored by St. John's River Water Management District and other conservation partners, which is important because it's an area which, you know, hundreds of manatees depend on that, and there's manatee use through there at all times of the year. We've seen really good news with our manatee health assessments that were done in December. And, you know, there's a lot of, I think one of the great things about what has happened is there's a lot closer partnerships with so many of these groups, not just St. John's, but the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, Brevard County, is just doing fantastic work to try to improve the Indian River Lagoon. And as I mentioned with other things, things that are good for manatees are certainly very good for the ecosystem. We've seen a lot of partners, even some of our rescue rehab partners, like Brevard Zoo that are working on a number of projects to improve water quality and water clarity so that some of these restoration projects can move forward. And we can certainly provide contacts at each one of those important partner organizations if that would be helpful moving forward. So, thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our next question, which is, Okalawa River Critical Habitat Area be extended northward up to Blue Spring and Marion Blue Spring, which are three mag springs? So this question, again, thank you for that question. It is outside of the scope of this meeting as this meeting is related to the proposed listing rather than the proposed critical habitat rule. So we'll go ahead and move on to our next question, which is, being treated as an endangered species, this should not affect the proposed critical habitat for the Antillan manatee, correct? And we'll turn that over to JP.
Yes, thank you for the question. Yes, that is correct. If the status for the Antillan manatee is finalized as endangered, it should not affect the proposed critical habitat for that species or for their population in Puerto Rico.
Thank you, Jan. All right. Our next question is, in Cabo Rojo, Puerto Rico, there is a project, Essencia, proposed to be developed near manatee waters. What are the potential risks? And again, that's for you, JP.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question again. So potential effects to manatees are evaluated through our Endangered Species Act Section 7 consultation process. We are aware, the service is aware of the project under the name Essencia, but we haven't yet received a consultation package for that project. So during a Section 7 consultation process, we will be able to evaluate any potential direct or indirect effects that the proposed project may have on the Antillan manatee and its habitat. With this proposed rule, that will not affect our consultation process for this project.
Thank you. All right, our next question is also for you. What measures are being taken to bolster monitoring of coastal development near manatee inhabited zones?
Thank you as well for that question. Sort of along the same lines as the previous question, we evaluate potential effects to manatees from coastal development through the ACTS Section 7 consultation process, and the proposed rule will not change that consultation process. We also evaluate potential threats to manatees as part of any species status review as was done for this listing proposal.
Thank you again, Jan. We'll move on to our next question, which is for Scott. Is there an anticipated publication date for the integrated population model for the Florida manatee?
Okay, thanks for the question. So the integrated population models referred to as IPMs, they're actually, they're a state of Florida project being developed primarily by the Fish and Wildlife Research Institute, part of FWC, with others helping also. The authors of the first IPM that was produced, which was for the Southwest unit of Florida, that was published in 2021 as what people would expect as a typical peer-reviewed paper. An update to that IPM and an IPM for the Atlantic Management Unit are both being worked on now by FWRI and others. We don't know for certain if those IPMs will be published in the same way that 2021 report was published, but we do expect all of those reports, once they're finalized, to be publicly available.
All right, thank you, Scott. We'll go ahead and move on to our last preregistered question, and then we'll move into live questions coming in through the chat. Our last question, preregistered question, is for Teri. With all the hardships and high mortality of the Florida manatee, why are they only being listed as threatened and not endangered?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, and there was much careful consideration through our process. You know, we assessed both current condition and future threats, but still determined that the Florida manatee was best characterized as a threatened species, one that is likely to become endangered in the foreseeable future. And again, we were looking at warm water habitat and foraging habitat very closely. Our review did include a comprehensive review of all the best available data at that time, and that was both scientific and commercial, and included the threats and population analysis. The proposed listing rule, if it moves, you know, if that's finalized, it would still result in the same protections for the Florida manatee as it would if it was endangered. So that's a really good question, but, you know, we certainly feel like this determination is appropriate, and I did want to make sure that, you know, folks were aware that as proposed, it would still result in the same protections for the Florida manatee. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and move into our questions that are coming in live through the chat. So again, you're welcome to submit those questions through the chat feature. I'll go ahead and check. I don't think we have any phone callers on, but again, we'll keep an eye out to see if they join so we can make sure they know how to ask a question. But with that, we'll go ahead and get started with our first question from the chat, which is for Nikki. Will there be a presentation concerning the proposed critical habitats for the two subspecies? If so, is there a date decided on yet?
Yeah, thanks for that question. No, we will not be having a presentation regarding the proposed critical habitat because we did not receive any public hearing requests by the date specified in the proposed rule.
Thank you, Nikki. All right, our next question is, what would change if the Florida manatee were uplisted back to endangered? And we'll turn that over to Chrissy.
Teri just kind of covered this a little bit. Because the species currently listed as the West Indian manatee has the blanket protections, so it's the same protections as an endangered species. And we were, our proposal includes those same blanket protections for threatened species. So, you know, if we were to determine that actually the Florida subspecies meets the definition of an endangered species, the management ensures the protections, they really wouldn't change because they are already getting the same protections as an endangered species right now.
Thank you, Chrissy. All right, we'll go to our next question, which I know Scott touched on this a little bit, but the question is, Teri mentioned two other population models she's working on. Will any final listing decision wait until those are completed? And we'll turn that over to Scott.
Thank you, Megan. So the answer is yes, we will be considering those. The two models that I'm pretty sure are being referred to, one is the integrated population models that came up with the previous question. And then the other one is the core biological model that has gone through multiple iterations over the last 15 or more years. The CBM, the core biological model, was used during the 2017 reclassification, and it's being updated currently. We're working with the USGS, US Geological Survey, FWRI, and others to update the core biological model. Also, we expect those results sometime in the next few months or so. We don't know exactly when, but those results will be in and will be considered before any final decision is made on this proposal.
Scott? All right, at this time, we are caught up with our questions that have been coming in live through the chat. We'll continue to monitor to see if we have some more questions coming in. Again, a reminder, we have Again, a reminder, we have this instruction slide up on the screen. For anyone who would like to ask a question, you can use that chat button and type your question in. Or if we have phone callers, the way to ask the question would be by pressing star nine, since they don't have access to that chat feature. So we'll go ahead and give it a moment here. We do have another twenty minutes or so in our question and answer session this evening, and then we'll go into accepting public comments. Thank you, everyone, for your patience as we get those questions coming in and identifying folks to respond. Then just let us know in the chat that the link for submitting comments was broken. I did just test it out, and it looks like it's working. So we'll go ahead and re-paste that in there and see if that helps. Another method would be to just go to regulations.gov and search the docket number. So we'll provide that information as well in the chat. Do let us know if there's an issue with that. And thank you, everyone, for your patience as we have more questions coming in the chat. All right, we do have a question in the chat, which is, what number of human population growth was considered in determining the stresses on habitat? And we'll turn that over to Scott.
Thank you, Megan. So the core biological model that I mentioned before includes multiple scenarios where they test changes in different threats, you know, such as watercraft-related collisions and, and other things. And those models, those scenarios do consider changes in those threats, you know, potential increase in the rate of watercraft-related collisions, potential changes in red tide to the extent that might be affected by human activities. So in that sense, the CBM for Florida manatees does sort of consider human population changes, but it's not tied to a specific level of population growth. My understanding of what the analyses were done for the Intellian is that they didn't have the same kind of model, so they did not specifically address human population growth.
Thank you, Scott. All right, this next question is for Jan. Can you please clarify what you said about listing in Puerto Rico or not?
Yes, thank you for the question. I, I think you mean when I mentioned the, the, one of the proposed petitions that we received, one of the proposed petitions that we received was to designate the Puerto Rico population as a distinct population segment. And we did not undertake that analysis because when we were doing the, the assessment for the Intellian manatee subspecies, we determined that the species should be listed as an endangered species. So since the Intellian manatee subspecies throughout its entire range is being proposed as listing as an endangered species, we did not look at the analyses to potentially list the Puerto Rico population as a distinct population segment.
Thank you, Jan. All right. We'll go ahead and continue to monitor for more questions coming in through the chat. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. All right, our next question is, will the existing species determination keys for the West Indian manatee still be able to be used to make effect determinations for the Florida manatee? And we'll turn that over to Scott.
Thank you again, Megan. Short answer is yes. As we said, nothing will be changing with the protections that are provided to Florida manatees under the, under the change. So our existing consultation key that we have for manatees, we can still continue to use.
Thank you, Scott. We have around ten minutes or so left in our question and answer session. We're going to do our best to get up, caught up with the questions coming in through the chat. But again, if anyone does want to submit any further questions, you can do so by chatting us or pressing star nine to raise your hand if you're a phone caller. Thank you again, everyone, for your patience as we make sure we haven't missed anything. All right, our next question is, the House Natural Resources Committee met today re-manatees, re-MMPA and ESA. Did anything change? And we'll go ahead and turn that over to Kristy.
Yeah, as the question mentioned that there was a, there was a meeting of the subcommittee today. No changes that we're aware of. It just was a hearing to discuss the Endangered Species Act and the Rain Metal Protection Act.
Thank you. All right, looks like we did have one more question, which was a follow-up to the initial question of what number of human population growth was considered in determining the stresses on habitat? The follow-up is, for example, Alachua County did a study for climate change over the next twenty years and surmised our growth rate would bring more than thirty K people to our country. Within twenty years, that's thirty K over the present growth rate additional. And we'll turn that over to Scott.
Thanks. So I think the way I would answer that is what we're trying to assess with manatees is, is how the threats and how the stressors might change over time. So clearly, human population growth could change certain of those stressors, like I mentioned, you know, watercraft operation, if there were boats out on the water, that could change that risk level. So the, the core biological model does try to address those issues in the scenarios it runs. It's just not tied to a specific population change, like in the example, Alachua County increasing the human population. That would have to be translated into something that we could assess what the stressor might change for manatees. And I think that's at least currently not the way the, the core biological model works. It would be difficult to tie to a specific human population growth rate. But, but human population in general and how it affects the stressors, that is what we try to, try to model.
Thank you, Scott. We'll just go ahead and see if there is anything anyone else would like to add on that question.
Yes, hello, this is Bill Brooks, and I'd like to follow up also in regards to that human growth aspect in regards to that there are county protection plans, boating protection plans and zones that provide protection. And then Scott also mentioned as through development and the impacts of development, those are addressed through consultation processes. So those are ways that growing hu, growing human population within Florida is being addressed.
Thank you, Billy. All right, we'll give it a moment here and see if we have any additional questions coming in. We do have another ten minutes or so again before we go ahead and get started with accepting comments this evening. Thank you, everyone, so much for submitting those questions so far and for your participation. All right, we do have a new question in the chat. Has the new administration proposed changes to endangered or threatened species protections that could affect manatees? And we'll turn that over to Kristy.
Yes, we're still getting kind of a handle on what changes may occur with the Endangered Species Act and with our regulations. We did, because the, the proposed rule was published on January fourteenth. We did apply, or proposing to apply the blanket rule for the forty rule. We would need to consider, that is one of the, the things that is being looked at in terms of removing that blanket rule of exception. So we'd have to think about that in terms of if we finalize the rule as is and with the Florida population as threatened, how we would consider a forty rule for the species. But no, no real information on that yet.
Thank you, Kristy. At this time, we are all caught up with the pre-registered and live questions coming in through the chat. A reminder that we are currently in the Q and A session. We'll go ahead and have the Q and A for a couple more minutes here, and then we'll move into the public comment session. So if you do have any further questions, please submit those in the chat, and we'll do our best to get some responses for you. Thank you again, everyone, for your questions and participation and your patience as we compile the last few questions here. All right, our next question is, more offshore drilling is likely in U.S. waters. Is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service considering this impact? And we'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, fair question. It kind of depends on where the drilling's proposed. So any activities that occur that could affect manatees should be covered by a Section 7 ESA consultation. So we just have to see what the proposal is and if manatees are likely to be affected. If they're likely to be affected, then we would expect to, to do a consultation on them. Any drilling that occurs miles offshore is unlikely to directly affect manatees, so we might not see those for manatees specifically.
Thank you, Scott. All right, looks like we probably have time for one more question here before we go ahead and move into the official public hearing portion. Our last question that we'll go ahead and get to is, will the department consider the use of water lettuce as forage for the manatees instead of listing it as invasive? And we'll go ahead and turn that over to Terry.
Thank you, Megan. And thanks for the question. I'll, I'll, I'll take for sure the first part of it, which is about water lettuce as forage for, for manatees. That is a pretty routine forage for them in the spring systems, in particular in areas like the St. John's River. And we do have extensive coordination with a lot of the agencies to, in, in certain places to make sure that that stays in and around warm water sites, particularly in the winter months. So we have a lot of conversations with not just Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, but the Corps of Engineers and others. I'm not aware of the listing it as an invasive, but it is strongly considered. It's one of the, the main types of forage that manatees utilize in the, in the St. John's River area.
Thank you, Terry. All right, looks like we have caught up with the questions in the chat. So we'll go ahead and get started with the public comment session this evening. And we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. As I mentioned, we'll officially get started with the verbal public hearing portion of tonight's meeting to receive comments related to the proposed listing. It's currently four ten Eastern Time, I'm sorry, Mountain Time, six ten Eastern Time. Again, this verbal public comment session, along with your comments, is being recorded as part of the official record. As a reminder, your camera and mic control settings are restricted during this time. You will only be able to talk if and when you are unmuted, so please remember to speak when prompted. The service wants to hear from all members of the public, so we'll be using the following guidelines today. First, please be mindful of the length of your comment so that everyone who wants to speak has an opportunity to do so. We ask that you keep your comment limited to three minutes today. We're going to do our best to get through our entire list of those who selected they wanted to offer a comment when they pre-registered for this evening's meeting and to save some time for others who might want to offer a comment as well. If we do not get the opportunity to hear your comment this evening, you can submit your written comments via You can submit your written comments via regulations.gov. And we'll provide that information in the chat. Second, please be respectful of others and their viewpoints. Third, please refrain from using profanity. While passion is welcome in your comment, policy requires that we mute anyone who uses inappropriate language. Because we are recording this meeting and others may be live streaming. So please avoid inappropriate language. If that does happen, we'll provide a reminder before unmuting that person. And asking them to try again using words acceptable to all ages. As I mentioned, comments will be accepted in the order that people registered. And if you registered before the start time of tonight's meeting, you're on our pre-registered commenter list. If you are on that commenter list, when it is your turn to provide your comment. We'll read your name aloud and display your name on the screen. We'll also display the name of the commenter who is next in line. When you hear your name called out, please use the raise hand feature so that we know you are available and ready to offer your comment. You can access the raise hand feature by clicking on either the reactions icon. Or the participants list icon, which are both located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you wave your mouse back and forth across the bottom of your Zoom screen, these icons should appear. Again, you might need to exit out of your full screen view and zoom to see those icons. You can then select the raise hand feature. Located either in the reactions icon or at the bottom of your participants list. Or if you're calling in through the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once you've raised your hand, you'll then be unmuted so that you can provide your verbal public comment. You may be double muted. If that is the case, we will prompt you to unmute yourself on your end so that we can hear you. We ask that you please spell out your first and last name for the record before providing your verbal comment. And if you are representing an organization or group, please say so during your comment. We'll display a commenter timer on the screen as well. After you've provided your comment, we will mute you and move on to our next commenter. Again, once we've worked our way through our current list, if we have time, we'll move on to those who registered after the start time of tonight's meeting. Who selected they wanted to offer a comment. And if we still have time remaining after that, we'll open up the verbal public comment portion. To anyone who would like to offer a comment who has not already done so. Next slide, please. And again, we just have these instructions listed here on the screens. And here we have the icons where you can see that reactions icon. That's one way to find the raise hand button. Or you can go to your participants list and you'll find the raise hand feature there. And again, we do want to note, folks are welcome to provide comments in Spanish this evening as well. With that, we'll go to the next slide and begin with our first pre-registered commenter. Alright. Our first pre-registered call- commenter is Colin McBenney. Colin, if you're on with us this evening and still would like to provide a comment, please raise your hand and we'll go ahead and get you unmuted. I don't see Colin in our list of pre-registered commenters, so we'll go ahead and circle back to them. Later on and see if they join us. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to our next pre-registered commenter, who is Asia Moore. I also don't see that we have Asia in our pre-registered commenter list. So again, we'll circle back to them if they join later on. With that, we'll move to Erin Conrad Allen. I don't see that we have Erin in our commenter lists or attendees list this evening. So again, we'll circle back and see if they join later on. With that, we'll move on to Fred Sweets. Fred, if you would like to provide a comment, please do raise your hand and we'll go ahead and get you unmuted. Give you a moment here. Just in case you're having trouble accessing that raise hand feature, we'll go ahead and unmute you. And if you'd like to provide a comment, feel free to come on. If not, we'll go to our next pre-registered commenter.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, Fred.
Yes, I live in Miami. And I'm concerned about the um, jet skis in the area around in Biscayne Bay. Uh, I used to see many manatees and now I don't see as many. I don't know why. I've called the Coast Guard on speeding uh, jet skis. Um, creating a lot of wake and out of the lane. That's normally traversed by uh, motorboats and uh, and the jet skis as part of the intracoastal waterway. What can be done to police the um, because I know they've hit some manatees in my area. Uh, what can be done to uh, eliminate violating jet ski operators? That's a bit of a comment, but it's also a question for anyone who might uh, have a solution.
Thank you for your comment, Fred. We are in the official public hearing portion. But you are welcome to submit questions as part of your comments. So we'll go ahead and ensure that's captured for the record. And we'll move on to our next pre-registered commenter. Who is Sarah Neams. Sarah, I do see your hand raised. I'll go ahead and prompt you to unmute now. Can you spell your first and last name for the record, please?
I can. It is Sarah, S A R A H, last name is Neams, N as in Nancy, E M as in Michael, E S.
Thank you. You can begin your comment.
Absolutely. Well, one, just want to thank you all for uh, in the service for hosting this webinar tonight. And, and certainly uh, grateful to have the opportunity to represent United Parks and Resorts, formerly known as Zero World Parks Entertainment on this uh, call. And uh, just wanted to put a comment in to thank you all for the work that we're doing in Florida and specifically with the MRP partnership. Um, Terry has done a phenomenal job with, with the group and I just wanted to put that into the record. That any sort of support that's needed from the partnership and specifically from United Parks and Resorts, uh, we are here to support. And that's all.
Thank you for your comment, Sarah. We will go ahead and lower your hand and move on to our next pre-registered commenter. Who is Grant Galhart. I don't see Grant in our attendees list this evening or any uh, phone callers on. But again, we'll circle back to see if they join us later on. With that, we'll move to our next pre-registered commenter, Rhonda Roth. Alright, perfect. I see your hand raised. I'll go ahead and prompt you to unmute Rhonda. Hi there, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Can you spell your last name for the record, please?
Uh, sure, it's Rhonda, R H O N D A. Last name is Roth, R O F like in Frank, F like in Frank.
Thank you, you can begin.
Um, yes, I, I live in South Florida. Um, I have two homes, one in Broward County and one in um, Henry County, so I'm inland and coastal. Um, I spend a lot of time on the coast and I spend a lot of time in the Florida Springs. And I am very concerned about the, the survival of the, the Florida subspecies of the manatees. As well as the Antillan manatees, but I have less familiarity with them. I um, I am concerned that the most recent population study that was done by the Fish and Wildlife Commission has too many uncertainties in it. For example, there were occasions where the, the water quality, the surface water was choppy and it were and they only considered the ability to see through the water from the airplanes to be fair. And I'd really like to know that these other population models would completed before the um, actual population number is considered. Um, we had a very politically motivated downlisting in twenty seventeen, as you know. Um, there are a lot of competing interests for manatee habitat. And I don't think that we can assume that other states where manatees travel are, are really any better. Their variables are huge. Human population, um, the drawdown of, of groundwater, including for the springs. Water quality considerations, agricultural runoff, septic sewer, uh sewage, uh spills. The quality of forage is compromised by that, as well as herbicide applications to our waters in Florida. Um, boating hazards are, are growing as the boating community gets bigger. And right now, I'm concerned that the changing critical habitat criteria might be too limiting. Especially that some of the critical habitat to the tune of two hundred sixty thousand acres was removed. Because the, the criteria was changed. So that I feel a little hamstrung right now commenting on that, given the uncertainties in the critical habitat. Uh, climate change is a very big deal. We are looking at um, increasing harmful algal blooms, including red tide. Seagrass losses as a result of that, stronger storms perhaps uh, that are tearing up our seagrass up in the um, in the Big Bend region. And then there's the shuttering of the fossil generating stations, which will eliminate the warm water refugia for the manatees in Florida. And how we are going to uh, work with that as the power plants shut down. I really would like to see the Akloahha River opened up all the way through. Like to see the um, management for this endangered or threatened species include uh, pre-range for them to go all the way from the St. John's up into Silver Springs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Rhonda. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute. And move on to our next pre-registered commenter, who is Julio Cologne. I do see we have Julio in our participants list, so we'll go ahead and give them a moment. To see if they would still like to comment. Again, you can access that raise hand feature in your participants list or in the Zoom toolbar. Perfect. I've go- I've gone ahead and prompted you to unmute Julio. Hello, can you hear us?
I sure can.
Perfect. Could you spell your first and last name for the record, please?
Yes, my first name is Julio, J U L I O. And my last name is Cologne, C O L O N.
Thank you, you can begin your comment.
Well, my name is Julio Cologne, as I said, and I filed the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one petition with the secretary. Requesting that the Antillan manatee in Puerto Rico be considered as an endangered species, or rather as an endangered distinct population segment. Apart from the uh, other subspecies, the Florida, the Florida manatee. So the reason why we filed that petition was because it just seemed like every week, sometimes every other week or every week, sometimes it was a dead manatee uh, washing up on the beach and it seemed like an unnecessary death sometimes. I like uh, uh, obviously we know what happens with uh, with watercraft motors. And so we decided to look into that and it seemed to me that the answer was to treat the Puerto Rico population as separate and distinct from the Florida subspecies, just because that a resurgence in one didn't necessarily mean that there was a resurgence in the other and they didn't interact at all. So that's why we did that. And while it may be discreet insignificant in a legal sense, um, in order to qualify to be a distinct population segment. I wanted to comment to express that I agree with the service's proposal to the, that gives the same or likely better protection really. Because it looks at the subspecies as a whole throughout its entire range. So a resurgence within the service's jurisdiction will not in theory affect its status unless it reflects strongly enough throughout the Antillan manatees range. So my comment eh, in a nutshell is that I agree with the classification as an endangered species wherever found with regard to the Antillan manatee. Rather than as a distinct population segment. And I also acknowledge that this would address the concerns mentioned in my twenty twenty-one request. My twenty twenty-one petition. And I would also like to incorporate um, the substance of that petition into my comment. And that's all. I also like to thank all the employees at the Department of Interior. That's all.
Thank you, Julio. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute and move to our next pre-registered commenter, Ricardo Torres. I see your hand raised. I've gone ahead and prompted you to unmute Ricardo.
Uh, good evening.
Yep, we can hear you.
Alright, perfect. Um, so my name is Ricardo Torres, that's R I C A R D O, last name T O R R E S. I'm speaking on behalf of the Center for Biological Diversity. First of all, I'd like to thank the service for their proposed listing of the Antillan manatee as endangered. And I'd just like to use my time today to comment on three aspects that are relevant to Antillan manatee conservation here in Puerto Rico. And that would be coastal development, watercraft mortality, and seagrass loss. In the hopes of encouraging the service to finalize this proposed rule as quickly as possible to protect the species. So currently, there are at least three projects, the coastal development that are affecting areas near confirmed manatee habitat. The Army Corps dredging of the San Juan Bay. The construction of this touristic mega complex, Proyecto Esencia, on two thousand acres of locally protected soil in the municipality of Cabo Rojo. And the legalization of private housing encroaching upon Bahía de Hobos Natural Reserve. So, lack of enforcement, inadequate regulatory controls, both locally and federally, have been crucial in allowing these questionable developments and I'd just like to call the service's attention to these. Lack of enforcement, along with, you know, an understaffed Department of Natural Resources, also exacerbates boating accidents, which some of the other commenters have spoken on. Watercraft mortality accounts for more than fifty percent of human-related Antillan manatee deaths. And increasingly frequent watercraft incidents directly harm manatees. But also they lead to the separation of calves from their mothers, which affects not only their chance at survival, but also stunts their development. Finally, seagrass. Seagrass in Puerto Rico faces a variety of threats, some of which the service correctly identified, such as coastal development. And yet others remained unnamed, such as glyphosate runoff. Glyphosate is currently used by all industrial agriculture conglomerates in Puerto Rico, which are mostly concentrated on the south of the island. As storms increase in intensity due to climate change, stormwater runoff is definitely going to be more aggressive. And it's going to result in larger amounts of glyphosate being discharged into the southern coast. Which creates algae blooms that interfere with natural seagrass regeneration processes. I'd just like to remind everyone here that swift action yields the most power in the race against extinction. And for these reasons, I urge the service to swiftly finalize this proposed rule. And ameliorate these and other threats to the species. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comment, Ricardo. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute and move to our next pre-registered commenter. Adely Santana. Alright, I see your hand raised. I prompted you to unmute. Are you able to hear us?
Yes. Hello, my name is Adely Santana. That's A I D A L I S. S A N T A N A, representing the Center for Biological Diversity. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My comments concern the imminent loss of warm water habitat and seagrass degradation across the state. Over half of Florida manatees rely on warm water discharges from power plants to survive the winter. Florida Power and Light aims to decarbonize its electricity generation by twenty forty-five, which could eliminate four major artificial warm water sanctuaries within the next twenty years. Despite this looming transition, power companies have yet to provide a clear schedule detailing when and where these outfalls will be removed. The service has acknowledged that this habitat loss poses a significant threat to manatees, increasing the risk of population collapse. Furthermore, seagrass, a critical food source for manatees, continues to decline, threatening the species' survival. An example of this, the Indian River Lagoon, lost up to ninety-five percent of its seagrass in less than a decade. Without access to sufficient forage, manatees face starvation and increased mortality, exacerbating the most recent unusual mortality event and posing the risk of more to come. Hence, I urge to prioritize the protection of the Florida manatee by working with the energy providers to give a clear timeline and implementation plan for their decarbonization efforts. Furthermore, more aggressive efforts are needed to curb nutrient pollution and restore sea grass beds statewide. And above all, immediate action is critical to prevent population declines and ensure the survival of this iconic species. Our Florida gentle giants. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute and move on to our next pre-registered commenter, who is Sandra Klinger. I don't see that Sandra is in our list of attendees this evening. Um, so we'll go ahead and give it a moment here. I'm just going to take a look at our attendees list and see if anyone we missed the first time has now joined the meeting. Um, so we'll take a moment here for that. All right. It doesn't look like we have any new pre-registered commenters on. So at this time, we are going to open up the meeting to anyone who would like to comment, regardless of whether you signed up when you registered. So again, if you'd like to comment, please do raise your hand. You can find that in your participants list or in the Zoom toolbar. Hi, we will go to Sarah Younger. Hi, Sarah. I prompted you to unmute.
Good day. Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi. Yeah, my name's Sarah Younger. That's S A R A H Y O U N G E R. And uh, first off, I want to thank my friend Rhonda for letting me know about this meeting because um I might have signed up for it, but totally forgot. So I wanted first off, thank her. Um, I also want to echo her comments. As uh, I do live in north central Florida, I see the water systems, I rely on well water myself, and our springs are under severe threat. Um, I live near the Santa Fe River Basin. We do get manatee here. And uh, in fact, uh, they're often found in parts of the springs, um, through the winter months especially. Um, I am very concerned about the lack of for- of forage. And as I had mentioned, the water lettuce um often is seen as uh in- as intrusive and is uh is used as um uh removed um in some areas. I'm I'm thinking that it might serve as a forage for some of these distressed animals. Um, and I also am concerned about our uh population growth. I shared that about Alachua County. We are going to be seeing massive number of people moving into the center part of the state um as they retreat from the seaside. And I think that the need for fresh water resources are going to continue to be um hammered. Um, we have uh right up the road from me, uh, a water bottling plant, which offers very little benefit to our community, yet carries millions of gallons of water every day out of our springs. Um, and you know, the commercialization of our freshwater systems pose a threat not just to the manatees, but also to our local residents. So um, I would like to know that if these critical habitats could be expanded in any way. Um, I would like to also echo that uh the opening of the Oklawaha and um the removal of Rodman Dam would uh benefit this this uh the species greatly, and I would hope that the department could make some efforts to assist in educating the public about the need for additional critical habitat for these um endangered species. And um, I've spent a little bit of time on the water. I I have seen those manatees. Um, of course, I don't interact with them. I just am very grateful when they make their presence known. And I want to um add that, you know, because they are such um uh iconic uh 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 animal for our state, that I would hope that we could cherish their presence in our waters and make sure that they continue for many generations. So thank you for taking my comments, and I hope that uh we continue to see the growth of manatees in our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We will place you back on mute. And again, we are now accepting comments from anyone who would like to provide a comment, regardless of whether you signed up when registering. So please do raise your hand if you would like to provide input. Any input is welcome. We'll have another twenty-five minutes or so in our comment session, and we'll be on ready to listen to your comments. Just a reminder that we will be in our comment session for another twenty minutes or so here. So if anyone does have any comments, please do use that raise hand feature, and we'll go ahead and get you unmuted. Thank you. I also do want to remind everyone that you're welcome to submit comments in Spanish this evening. So if anyone would like to provide any comments in Spanish, please feel free to raise your hand. Uh, the instructions for providing comments in Spanish are the same for providing those in English. I see our hand raised. I'll go ahead and unmute you now. Hey there, can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. Could you spell your name for the record?
Yes, M D, the letters, Fairchild, F A I R C H I L D. Um, my my comment is, I don't want it to sound like a tirade. Um, we we all understand that that the biological diversity is is really important. And a- as for the manatees, the richness of the natural environment and the natural world is what provides uh for their immunity, if you will. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, trees like um, I you know, I feel like I'm preaching to the choir, but just uh, you know, trees like uh the um uh Abicentin German, the uh mangrove and and the other one, they they have anti-tumor compounds. And you know, if these trees are planted in in uh in 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 the same concentration that they would be in the natural environment, you'd see a uh healthier population. Of course, you can't remediate uh uh propeller scars, and I'm not uh, you know, advancing uh panacea. But it's known that the um uh in that, it's known that the manatees are suffering from escalating HPV infections, which is probably coming from sewer systems or boat bilges or whatever. And uh, from the human population, it's, I I don't know if they've traced it, but these plant metabolites that get in the water from a biologically rich environment are some of the things that can extend the life of the animals and give them some immunity to these uh these diseases. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute. And we'll move on to our next hand raised, which is Grant Gelheart. I've prompted you to unmute, Grant. Are you able to hear us? You may be double muted on your end. Let me just go ahead and um try that again. You should see a prompt on your screen saying. We can hear you now. Yes.
Yes. Um, hello, uh, my name is Grant Gelheart. I'm uh the chair of the uh Florida Sierra Club. And um, as a a statewide environmental group, uh conservation group, we are very concerned about the the manatee habitat and uh uh basically the Florida manatee in this case here. Um, the loss of uh sea grass beds over the last uh decade has been disastrous to for the Florida manatee. Uh, also, um, the need for warm water habitat is critical. Uh, we encourage that uh the state and the federal government look into the uh uh breaching of the Rodman Dam to open up the Oklawaha River uh to manatees uh uh travel, traveling up to the spring systems, especially Silver Springs and the twenty submerged springs along the uh Oklawaha River. So we are hoping that the uh, both the federal government and the state government uh take additional steps to protect these manate- manatees. Uh, they need to have the ultimate protection uh in this changing times with uh uh global warming, whether we want to admit it or not, it is a fact. And uh, the the global warming is impacting both sea grass beds and habitat. And we urge that the uh uh US Fish and Wildlife Service and the uh the Florida uh Fish and Wildlife Service uh uh take action to uh protect the manatee and incur uh and take all necessary steps to uh protect them, whether they are uh listed as threatened or endangered. Uh, both uh, both listings are important. Of course, uh, if any possibility of getting them listed as endangered would be great. Uh, but if they're continued to be listed as threatened, um, additional time, resource, and staffing eh to protect the uh grass beds, water quality, water quality protection is uh critical. The dumping of water out of um the uh the lakes uh uh shore water systems and uh Lake Okochobee has been disastrous on sea uh sea grass beds, both in the Indian River Lagoon and down the uh into Fort Myers and uh Estero Bay and uh Charlotte Harbor. Uh, thank you very much for your time and effort. Keep up the good work. We are relying on you. You are the front lines. Please uh protect the manatees and uh protect this iconic uh spe- uh species. Thank you very much. Again, Grant Gelheart, Florida Sierra Club.
Thank you, Grant. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute and lower your hand. And we'll continue to keep an eye out for any hands raised. We have moved through all of our pre-registered commenters and the hands raised that I saw. So if anyone would like to comment again, you're welcome to do so. We have thirteen minutes or so left in our comment session before we turn it back to the service for some closing remarks. So again, we do encourage you to submit comments verbally here this evening, or if you'd prefer to submit those in writing, you can visit regulations.gov, and we have that information in the chat. I see Lyman has their hand raised. I prompted you to unmute. Are you able to hear us?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, uh, this is Lyman Welch. I live in Sanibel, Florida. Um, and I just want to comment that I'd like you to uh adopt the strongest protections for manatee. Uh, the manatee is a a very special creature here in in Florida. Uh, and it's uh, you know, everyone looks at them and really enjoys them. They're uh, they're troubled now. They're being threatened by boaters. Uh, they're being especially threatened by the lack of sea grass, so that they're not able to um eat. And and some of them have been starving, uh especially during the winter months uh and and dying, and and that's uh not a good thing. We, I would like to see more manatees around in the streams and in the waters um and and able to survive. And to do that, I think you need to adopt some stronger protections of of different habitat to protect the sea grass and provide uh for places for the manatees to eat. Uh, I think there there may be some additional areas in Florida that should be protected beyond what you've proposed in the initial proposal. So I think you need to look carefully at at additional uh areas for protection uh to pro- um promote sea grass growth uh to protect the manatee. Um, and I'm speaking of Um, and I'm speaking of, of Florida. I, I know you're looking at Puerto Rico as well, but Um, and I'm speaking of, of Florida. I, I know you're looking at Puerto Rico as well, but um, I'm, I'm only really knowledgeable about the manatees in Florida. um, I'm, I'm only really knowledgeable about the manatees in Florida. Um, but we really enjoy them here. They're a great part of wildlife on, on Sanibel where I live. Um, but we really enjoy them here. They're a great part of wildlife on, on Sanibel where I live. It's amazing when we see them uh, come up on the, in, in the waters, whether you, you know, we're in It's amazing when we see them uh, come up on the, in, in the waters, whether you, you know, we're in uh, Ding Darling Refuge and, and kayaking about and, and seeing the manatees uh, Ding Darling Refuge and, and kayaking about and, and seeing the manatees or whether they come up on the beaches and the shorelines or or whether they come up on the beaches and the shorelines or uh, in, in the different uh, streams and, and waterways that we have here uh, in, in Sanibel. uh, in, in the different uh, streams and, and waterways that we have here uh, in, in Sanibel. Uh, I really enjoy them and I, I'd like uh, more protection to be there. Uh, I really enjoy them and I, I'd like uh, more protection to be there. So uh, just wanted to encourage some stronger protection. I think it's important to protect the manatees. So uh, just wanted to encourage some stronger protection. I think it's important to protect the manatees. Uh, they're, they need their, the seagrass uh, to be there uh, to allow them to eat and to survive. Uh, they're, they need their, the seagrass uh, to be there uh, to allow them to eat and to survive. Uh, so I think the, the strongest protection and look at additional areas Uh, so I think the, the strongest protection and look at additional areas uh, that, that you can protect beyond what you've proposed. uh, that, that you can protect beyond what you've proposed. Because I think there are some additional areas and other people have, have provided more comments. Because I think there are some additional areas and other people have, have provided more comments. The Sierra Club, for example, the Sierra Club of Florida has provided some additional areas The Sierra Club, for example, the Sierra Club of Florida has provided some additional areas and I would support those and I would support those uh, to be protected uh, in addition to what you've proposed so far. uh, to be protected uh, in addition to what you've proposed so far. So thank you very much for offering the opportunity to comment and uh, have a great day. So thank you very much for offering the opportunity to comment and uh, have a great day.
Thank you for your comment, Lyman. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute. Thank you for your comment, Lyman. We'll go ahead and place you back on mute. And we will look for additional hands raised. And we will look for additional hands raised. Again, we welcome any input that you might have this evening. If you'd like to do that verbally, you can raise your hand Again, we welcome any input that you might have this evening. If you'd like to do that verbally, you can raise your hand or we have that comment information in the chat. or we have that comment information in the chat. You can submit comments through regulations.gov by searching the docket number You can submit comments through regulations.gov by searching the docket number or we have the direct link in the chat and those comments can be submitted by March seventeenth. or we have the direct link in the chat and those comments can be submitted by March seventeenth. And we've also included a link to um, the press release and some FAQs. And we've also included a link to um, the press release and some FAQs. So do open that chat and copy those down. So do open that chat and copy those down. Again, we'll continue to keep our eye out for any hands raised. Again, we'll continue to keep our eye out for any hands raised. Right, it looks like we have around five more minutes in our meeting this evening, so we have time for one more comment. If anyone would like to provide a comment, please do raise your hand. We'll keep an eye out for hands raised and then we will go to closing remarks from the service. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and questions. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lourdes with the service to close us out.
The service would like to thank everyone for attending this meeting and for those that asked questions or provided comments or testimony. We would consider all of this information, um, as well as, as any comments on the proposed rule received or postmarked before March seventeen. And we would like to remind you that um, all of the comments will be received rather than in process. If you have any questions, please send it to the um, contacts in our website. Um, please have a good, a good evening and thank you.